Welcome to the Swanee County Board of-
Cheers.
Sorry, hang on just a second.
I think these are mine, Mr. Sh-
You got yours?
Let's try this again. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Swanee County Board of County Commissioner Meeting for July 16th, 2024. Mr. Land couldn't be here tonight, so I drew the short straw. Is there a reason y'all standing up?
Pledge and prayer. He's done forgot.
You were just ahead of the game, huh? I wasn't ready yet. We're gonna have the invocation with Commissioner Perkins and the pledge by Commissioner Mobley. If you'll all stand if you can.
Let us pray. God our Father in heaven, we come, dear God, this time is to give you thanks and praise. God, we thank you for allowing us to be here, dear God. Ask you bless upon this board, dear God, that you bless us, oh God, with the knowledge and wisdom. Give us the strength, oh God, to do the thing that's necessary for this community. And God, we thank you to continue to bless us one by one and name by name. And God, look on this concern, our concerned citizens, dear God, that came out tonight, dear God. Bless them, oh God, in the mighty way. And God, every department that we have, dear God, look on them, oh God. Look on our administration. Look on, dear God, our administrator. Look on, dear God, our attorney. In every facet, every part of our community, dear God, in our departments, God, look on them in the mighty way. And God, we thank you, dear God, for what you're doing, as you bless our nation, God, in a mighty way, dear God. Bring this nation back to its needs, dear God, to humble themselves, oh God, and know that you're God. And, oh God, that you've blessed, oh God, our community, our state, and, oh God, in the mighty way. And we thank and crackly pray. Amen.
Pledge, allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the July 2nd, 2024 regular meeting. Is there any discussion or can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mobley, second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We'll move on to public concerns and comments, but before we bring anybody up, Mr. Morrison would like to make a few comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to clarify a couple of things, because I've had, as questions are forwarded to the commissioners, those get forwarded to me. There's been lots of questions about Summit, so I want to go ahead and address those on the front end today, so that way you can, any public comments will be hopefully in light of what I'm about to say. And we're gonna have the meeting on August 6th, and I'm gonna say exactly the same thing before we open up the public discussion there. So for those who really don't like to hear me talk, I apologize in advance. So when I was a kid, or when my wife and I were trying to get pregnant, I was told, you never tell anybody you're pregnant. And this is kind of a poor analogy for it. Thank you, Maurice. But until you get after the first trimester, because bad things, that's when bad things happen, as you're kind of getting older and getting, going through stuff. And kind of having a kid is the best analogy that I can use for Project Summit. And here's what I mean by that. You know, when you have a kid, you're excited and you're scared, and you have an awful lot of questions. But you can't answer those questions, because you don't know a lot of answers before you can even know what the questions to ask are. So we've had a lot of questions, such as how are we gonna pay for various parts of the project? The answer to all of them is, I don't know. We don't. We know three things about Project Summit. The first is what it's gonna be used for, which is a shelter. The second, where it's gonna go, the 390 acres. And the third is how we're gonna pay for it, through a combination of the loan and through the grant from the state of Florida. Those are the only things we know. So to the extent people are asking for answers on top of that, the honest-to-God answer is, I don't know. Beyond that, it is speculation. And I don't want to do you the disservice of having us get up here and speculate and have something that we speculate not occur. Questions that are asked include, when the sports complex opens, what, we don't know that it's gonna be a sports complex. We don't know if it's gonna be a boy or a girl, right? There are certain questions we just don't know the answer to. Again, it's just like having a kid. You're mostly excited, but you got questions and you're scared. And, but on the whole, you're excited, and there's a huge possibility of things happening here. And I think that's the best way to look at this. I also want to point out one other thing in regard to the questions about funding in this land versus other parcels of property. Just by way of background, as Commissioner Land made clear during his presentation to everybody, that this place where the land is, where the shelter is going to go was selected in consultation with the state of Florida. So that $2.5 million grant was to purchase this property. All right? So when we get to August 6th, the question's not gonna be, can we say no and renegotiate and try to buy and find other land cheaper? No. It's a yes or no on the referendum of, are we buying that piece of property? We have $2.5 million to go towards that piece of property, which the state of Florida approved. We have a loan to go towards the purchase of that piece of property, which the state of Florida has already preliminarily approved. There's no renegotiation. It's a yea or a nay. And if the answer, and I'm not telling anybody what to do on this board. If the board votes no, it's just we're done. Something terrible happened in the first trimester, and the project's over. And that's just that simple. So I just wanted to be very clear with everyone, because there are a lot of excellent questions, which as the years move forward and as Project Summit hopefully moves forward, we will answer those questions, because it will be the ripe prime opportunity to do so, because we'll know more about the project. We'll know what it's gonna be. We'll know what it's gonna be used for. But until we cover those simple steps, we can't answer those questions. So, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you letting me speak as to that, but I thought it was important that we framed everything accordingly.
I thought it was a pretty good analogy, by the way. It worked for me. I don't know about everybody else.
Well, he said that we, we were trying to get pregnant. Jimmy just talked about getting pregnant today in the meeting we had today. Now, we'll just keep, one more time, we might have somebody pregnant, a man, a man of that. He said, Jimmy said today.
We're gonna have to hold up on the public concerns and comments for just a minute. I got some time-specific items. Item number 12 at 5:35, or as soon thereafter, as a matter can be heard, hold the first of two public hearings, LDR 24-03, an application by the Board of County Commissioners to amend the text to the land development regulations by adding requirements for new RV parks or campgrounds to be connected, I'm sorry, connected to a centralized water and sewer system. Mr. Meeks.
Do you swear a firm testament in giving this cause of the truth, the whole truth, not the true self that you got?
I do. Mr. Chairman, board members, this stems from a result of a moratorium that the Board of County Commissioners had placed on RV parks and campgrounds, special permit applications, I think, that took place around April the 2nd of 2024. At that time, we were directed to look at some of the requirements from surrounding communities and other communities in the state of Florida, and how they were addressing RV parks and campgrounds. As most of you know, in 2023, we had changed, made some changes to our requirements in the RV park and campground section. But we went further into that, and one of the places that we looked at was in Levy County. And Levy County has a regulation that requires any new RV park or campground to be connected to a county or municipal home, centralized water and sewer system. And that it would have to be evidenced by a binding agreement with the county or in the municipality that will be providing the sewer and water services. The county will not issue a certificate of completion or certificate of occupancy until the RV park is connected to water and sewer services. RV parks and campgrounds approved before August 6th, 2024 are allowed to expand their boundary and their sites to contiguous lands, provided all required well septic permits are permitted and approved. So this language would allow for any proposed new RV parks to be connected to a centralized water and sewer system that would be owned by the county or the city, or possibly the town of Bramford. But would also put an allowance in there for existing RV parks that may have existed for multiple years or existing on the anticipated date of adoption of this text amendment would be allowed to expand their boundaries and expand their sites without having to connect to those utilities. Because when those RV parks and campgrounds were placed there, there were no availabilities of utilities services in those areas. So we're putting an allowance in there to allow them to continue to develop. We are aware of some of the RV sites, RV parks acquiring additional adjacent acreage for future possible expansions. And if they were not allowed to expand under their current permitting requirements, would have probably never purchased the property. This amendment does not require any action of the Board of County Commissioners at this time. It just offers an opportunity to have public concern to comment in regards to the amendment. So you would open up your public, public comment for the application, but it wouldn't require any action of the board tonight. We would bring the amendment back for the commission for proposed adoption at the August 6th County Commission. And at this time, I would enter the file into the record.
Admit it as one.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Is there any questions by the board?
No.
I just, one question, Mr. Meeks. It says that you can, it has to be connected to a centralized water and sewer system. But if they put their own sewer system in, or would that be considered a centralized?
It is centralized, but the way the language is worded, it would be county or municipal home.
Okay. That answered my question.
We can, if you guys want to modify that language, and not be county or municipal alone, we can modify that language. If you want to consider an onsite septic treatment facility, then we can modify that language at this time. The application as written went before Planning and Zoning Board, and their recommendation was for approval of the language as written.
That's all I need, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add?
Yes, sir.
During the last RV park discussion, a couple of comments came out that was pretty, kept getting repeated, and that is, where does the sewer go to? This addresses that. Also, because of close proximity to neighborhoods, this takes care of that, of the current rate. So just, you know, comments, you know, that. So try to listen.
Some of the existing regulations as far as the separation requirements and where those existing RV parks and campgrounds are located at now really limit and restrict where they can be placed in the county, as it is being located on collector and arterial roads. But one thing that we didn't want to handcuff is that we identify and recognize that one of the areas that is served for RV parks and campgrounds is in like your commercial highway interchange areas, which caters to the traveling public. So it is used as lodging. And as most of you know, because you voted on a lot of this, but there's been significant dollars that's been invested in water and sewer at our, at our interchanges. So if you do have developments that come in that are looking to develop a RV campground or resort in those areas, those municipal or county-owned water and sewer facilities are available in those areas.
Thank you. Any questions by the board? Thank you, Mr. Meeks. I'll open it up to public comment. Anybody have anything wish to say on it? Now, this is not for regular public concerns and comments. This is on this one particular item. No takers? Right. Appreciate it, Mr. Meeks. We don't have to do anything with that, right?
No.
You gotta stand there. We got another one, don't we?
The, the next amendment that the board has under their consideration is proposed LDR 24-04. This is an amendment that would be in regards to, I believe some of you are familiar with the lady that had came before the commission explaining the situation she had, and that she had a non-conforming property, but was eligible for certain funds that were made available for damage from Hurricane Adelia for the replacement of a home. Due to her property being non-conforming, and when it was actually created, left her property to where it was no longer eligible for a certificate of land developer regulation compliance, which is a requirement to be issued before a building permit can be issued. Several years ago, there was an attempt, I believe, that was made by the county commissioners to try to address situations for non-conformities when they exist on a property, when they, they sustained damage as a result of a local state of emergency. But I don't think that that language actually accomplished what the board had intended to do. Now, this goes back probably 15-plus years ago, when that was, that was done. So what we did is that on the latter part of that section, it's in underlined language, is we just added under the section, dealing with non-conforming use of structure and premises, added language that should a non-conforming property containing the primary residence of the property owner be destroyed during a local state of emergency. As declared by the Board of County Commissioners, the homeowner shall be allowed to replace their residence, provided all other requirements of the regulations are met, such as elevations of structures and setback requirements. That's just standard language. You do have to meet your setbacks, and if the property ends up being in a flood zone, we cannot exempt them from elevation requirements that they may have. But this language would allow for a non-conforming property that was destroyed during a local state of emergency to be able to replace their residence, and it would take care of the situation as the lady faces today and be, make it where she would be eligible for the funding.
I think that's a pretty good idea.
This information was also recommended for approval from Planning and Zoning Board. Also does not require any action of the board tonight. We'd be bringing it back for the August 6th agenda for adoption of the board. If you don't have any modifications, suggestions tonight, then I would enter the file into the record.
Admit it as one.
Any, any questions by the board, Mr. Meeks?
No.
Anybody wishing to speak on, on this particular item now? Yes, ma'am. You have to come to the podium. Sorry, but you have to. You'll be fine. Come on, I'll help you through it. I just need your name and address for the record.
Gail Candace Cogan, 11251 147 Place in Live Oak. I'm the person that brought it to the attention that my home was destroyed by the storm. And I went to Mr. Meeks, and he said, we can't build or do anything with the property. So it was like $100,000, and I'm gonna be homeless. So I would appreciate if we can go forward with this, so I can have a home. I'm staying in a FEMA camp right now since the storm, and I'm gonna go home.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Anyone else? And you said we don't take any action on that?
No action. We'll just bring it back as written for the board on August 6th.
Well, I'll tell you, you know, it's, it's a good thing. I think it's a good thing. One of the joys of running for public office is when you can actually help somebody with something. This is one of those things, and-
Absolutely.
Appreciate your work on-
Yes, sir. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Ron.
Moving on back to pub, now we're gonna do public concerns and comments. So, Mr. Broders, you'd be first up. Don't forget name and address, please, sir.
Keith Broders, 201 Ranchera Street Northwest, Live Oak, Florida. What I would like to share with you tonight is, is that on Friday, this coming Friday, the 19th of July, a man is gonna be here that is gonna enlighten us a great deal. His name is Richard Mack. Sheriff Richard Mack was sheriff of Graham County, Arizona, back in 1994, when President of, at that time, Bill Clinton tried to ram through the counties, something called the Brady Bill. And they tried to impose on the county sheriffs a responsibility to fund the implementation of the Brady Bill. Sheriff Mack and another sheriff, Sheriff Prince, filed lawsuit in the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court ruled in favor of Sheriff Mack and told him and their other sheriffs of this nation that they are responsible to their voters and to the Constitution, not to the President of the United States. And so he won the lawsuit, and he spent the last 30 years of his life dedicated to sharing the gospel of the county sheriff. As you well know, we have a county sheriff election coming up. We have three outstanding candidates. And I encourage you to study and to vote for the one that you think will best defend your rights under the Constitution. So that, that event will be at 2 o'clock at the City Hall in Live Oak, 2 o'clock, July the 19th. Go from 2 to 4, first come, first served. There's only room for 121 people, so come, come early if you want to have a seat. The other thing that I wanted to share with you in that regard is, one of the things he's trying to share with us is the fact that we want our county to be a truly constitutional county. Our county has already filed a resolution indicating that we are a second amendment sanctuary county. We are not going to enforce any rules, regulations, codes, ordinance, or statutes that infringe on the rights of the people to own and keep, bear arms. But what Sheriff Mack is suggesting is, is that we expand, expand that to the other nine amendments also, so that we will defend all of the Bill of Rights, and we will not do what the Nazi war criminals did, and that is take the orders drawn high and implement them. Frankly, in the Bible, it tells us about the Hebrew midwives and how they defied the Pharaoh. They did what was right. And you take a look at the Nazi war criminals, who they, basically their defense was, we didn't do anything wrong. We were just following orders. Do we want our county officials just to follow orders? Or do we want them to follow the laws of God and the Constitution? So anyway, that's about all that I have to say right now. I passed out a little sheet of paper that had the 5,000-year lead. 28 principles of liberty that the founding fathers considered before they wrote the Constitution and created our nation. I'd like you to read those 28 principles and share them. And if you're interested, you can get the book from NCCS. I've got, with me today, I've got copies that I've been presenting to the county commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Broders. And I'll put that in my calendar. Anyone else under public comment? Come on up. Name and address, please.
I am Elizabeth Sapp, 895548 St. Live Oak, Florida, 32060. I am here because of Swanee County Building Department. I am sick of going in that place and being rude to. Our permits are six, eight, 10, 12 weeks out. And whenever you go in there, it's like you're imposing on them when they're there to do a job. I went in there not too long ago, and when we got back from vacation, I handed her a paper, Kayzley Rodriguez, the paper, permit. She handed it back to me and told me that I had to do cloud permit. I am fully aware of cloud permit. I do it weekly with Ms. Sarah in Hamilton County. I asked her, our internet stays down as much as it stays up. And I asked her, I said, so what happens if we have no internet? And she looked dead at me and said, you have a phone, don't you? I'm not there to use my phone to do permits when she could help out. Well, then I was told that I could do, I could use the computer in the office that wasn't there. They got it there that day, but it wasn't there at the time. So my request is, y'all need to clean up that building department. I have complained to everybody on this board. I have heard back from everybody except Mr. Hale. I have not heard anything bad from him. I have posted on Facebook. I get friend requests from Kayzley to be my friend on Facebook. I'm not there to be her friend. I am there to get our business permits and keep our business running, because that's our livelihood. And if y'all don't do something with this, this girl and this office, there is no management in there. Mr. Hinkle goes above and beyond to help Harold anytime he can. And him and I have had disagreements, but he will go above and beyond to help Harold any, absolutely any way he can. There is no management in that office, none. You go over to Mr. Meeks's office, and he's gonna take the employee side. So what do you do, except stand there and raise your blood pressure and, I mean, I'm, I'm a weekly call with Mr. Mobley complaining about this office, and nothing gets done. Nothing is absolutely getting done about this office. And it's ridiculous. I, I have permits out there, and I told Mr. Mobley, I said, they couldn't keep up with it on paper. What do y'all think they gonna do with them out there in the cloud? They're gonna be there in the cloud till God knows when. So I, I personally would like to see Ms. Kayzley relieved of her duties, because we are getting nowhere with her. She's rude. She doesn't try to help you. She tells you to do it yourself. Well, if we're gonna do it ourselves, what do we need them in the office for? Paying for, paying their salaries. And instead of buying new furniture, why aren't we getting somebody in there that can help, that can help the, the citizens of this, this county? Ms. Sarah was gonna come over here, and I guarantee you, she could go in there with one other person and run that office, because she does it in Hamilton County by herself. But all she can be told is you will be a permit clerk. She's gonna have no authority over the girls in the office. So, I mean, I went in there one time, one was sitting on the phone, or was sitting behind her desk, filing her nails. The other one was on the phone with her friends, laughing and giggling. And here I am, trying to get a permit. So I, as a taxpayer, I am sick and tired of trying to get something done about this office. This, this business is our livelihood. And if we don't have permits, we can't go forward with anything.
Understood.
So I am requesting, asking that Ms. Kayzley Rodriguez be relieved of her duties. Anybody else in that office that can't do their job, get rid of them too, and get somebody in there that can.
We appreciate your comments, Ms. Sapp, and I assure you, it's being looked into.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah.
Anybody else? Tria?
Mr. Hennig has hand up to it. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hennig has hand up to us. Mr. Hennig has-
Name and address for the record.
My name is Tria Foster, 11794 176 St. McAlton, Florida. I'm here today regarding the building department also. I cool permits for 30 years for people. This is what I do for a living. Not only I do this, but I also sell mobile homes. I only get paid once the home is on the property. So when you go to the building department, and it takes months to get a permit, just for example, April the 30th, I turn in a permit online, April the 30th. I checked back again, and again, twice, they lost my permit. It's online. I pulled it up again today to prove where I sent it to, same thing. I go and down there three weeks ago. They tell me, oh, we've switched it over to the cloud permitting. That's fine. I've used cloud before. I went back to the office. I put it in cloud, and that's been three weeks. I go back because I get a email stating that it's ready to be paid for. Well, when you're gonna pay for something, you think the job's done. So it would not let me go in and pay for it. So my coworker, I asked her to call and ask them, how do we pay for it? So she said, well, come on down here. We take cash or, or check. So I immediately went down there to try to pay for it. And she said to me, I'm sorry, but it's not ready. We're still waiting on the septic permit and the driveway approval. I said, well, have you not gotten them? What's, you know, can you call them? And Kayzley says, no, you need to reach out to them. Okay. Well, that's not how I feel. You can pick up that phone and just call over there and say, hey, have I missed it? Or something? But after it was all said and done, I went over to the septic department. They have had this approval, and they showed me where they sent it to the building department on June the 7th. Okay? So Mr. Jenkins sent it back over to them, and I'm still on the phone with the driveway department. And she says, I'm sorry, ma'am, but we just got it. So now you're telling me that I have to wait another week on something that has been in there since April the 30th, with attitudes the whole time? There's enough people in that office that should be able to do these permits. It's not that hard to do. And you have somebody, I don't know, there's a new employee. It looks like I've went in there several times over across the hall. She's on the phone. She's filing her fingernails. She could be over there helping them too, if they have a backup. But right now, the way I was talked to today, and the phone call that I got after I left, I don't appreciate it, and I think some changes need to be made. I, I do not feel like I should have to wait months to get a permit, and that's how I get paid, is when my home is delivered and set up. So no matter the people in the office, they get a check every Friday. I don't. I sit there and depend on them. And if you're not calling me and letting me know- sit there and depend on them. And if you're not calling me and letting me know what I missed, or something, I'm not gonna know. So you've got four girls in there, and they should be really strong at doing these permits, and none of them act like they want to help you. Got another thing. I pull permits for RVs. I pulled a permit last June for a customer. That permit was good until January. In February, he got a letter stating that he was gonna be fined if he did not renew his RV permit. I went down there to pay it for him, because I previously pulled it. No one, not, not one person could find that, where he had been fined, no paperwork, no nothing. This was in March. In April, I went in there, and I was told by Maileen that she was working on it. Okay? Here it is July, and I still don't know. So if you're gonna fine somebody, make sure you know what's going on, so they can pay the fine. Don't wait months down the road, because we still don't know.
Just so the public knows, Ms. Heron called me today, and Foster, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We go back a long way. But she called me today, and expressed her displeasure and the facts that she has just put out, and I have made a call to Mr. Scott, and I assure you, there are some things in the works to alleviate the problem.
Well, it's just, you know, you don't have to talk to people the way you do. I mean, we work, we all work in public. We all have a job to do. No matter if you're there from 8:00 to 5:00, what your job is, if you just have to pick up a phone call to make a customer happy, do that. But don't have an attitude every time I ask you something. Don't have an attitude when we call you. And it's just not me. I hear it from a lot of people. Even when I was in there today, she was rude to someone else. But I really think that she needs to have customer service skills sent to school or removed, because she has a bad attitude.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Just so the public's clear, the, please don't take the lack of comment from the board here as any kind of comment about what you're doing. We just can't comment about personnel matters. So
I understand.
I just don't want, I just don't want anybody to feel like they're being ignored.
I'm just here to express what's been going on for months over end, and, I mean, I know our county's growing, but that's not an excuse to the way you treat people. We had two people in there, Marcy and Van Esther, for years. They were excellent people. They went over and beyond, and that's what these girls should do. I mean, us as taxpayers are paying their salary.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Hanek.
Wayne Hanek, 11883 93rd Road. I just have a reminder that on June 30th, 2025, the $750,000 fire station rent expires. So you have less than a year to do something with it. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record, if you don't mind.
I'm January Jernigan, 14319 98th Street. I hate public speaking, so.
I know how you feel.
I'm shaken. I am here to speak specifically about the decimation of a grove of live oaks, 40 to 50, maybe 100-year-old. Have some pictures I'll show you, by a local developer. But I'm also, I would like to address the issue more broadly, in, in reference to how it affects our entire county, in a town whose namesake comes from these trees. I think we should have some protections for them. I'm not talking, I want to be clear, I'm very conservative and, and believe government, you know, is there for a reason, but not overstepping. I don't think, I'm not speaking to residences, individuals who own property, and they need to take down a tree 'cause it's hanging over their house, and talking about commercial residential developers that come in and develop these big parcels of land. This is the subdivision that I'm speaking about, where the stuff took place. And what you can see here is just the general look of the subdivision, all the trees that are there. All the yards are filled up with trees. The previous developer did a really good job, I think, of developing this with, with heart and leaving trees. And the, I'll not play that all the way through, but you can see massive live oak trees as, as we're just driving down the road. This is not professionally videoed. My 12-year-old did it. So, but you can see that there are live oaks. I'm not talking about water oaks. I'm not talking about scrub oaks. I'm talking about these ancient trees that have lifespans 10 times what our lifespans are. Oh, man, I have this all ordered. Here's an example. So the land that has been cleared, this is what's on the other side. And you can see these live oaks, they're not 50 years old. They're old trees, and some of them are younger, and if left alone, will be beautiful trees. But this goes on for a little while. But I wanted to give you a sense of what the property that I'm gonna show you looked like before it was clear cut. So, and you can see, this goes on and on. These are established live oak trees. This is the beginning of the clearing. This is some border trees that we had all hoped they would leave. And you can see through this picture, I don't know if it's hard to see on that screen, but if you look through, you can see some live oaks in the background. This is as they're cutting, I'm filming these trees, that they're starting to take out at the side of the road. These aren't trees that are back where somebody would put a house. These are trees along the border of the road. Again, here's, if you look in the background, this was all filled. It was about 10 acres, 10 to 12 acres, filled with these trees. The root ball on this tree, look at it in the reference to that tractor, some of these root balls were 20 feet deep. It was, it's crazy, and it, it just is destroyed. It's gone. And live oaks are important, and I, I started thinking back about our town and where our live oaks are, 'cause you drive through Tallahassee, and they're, they're on the streets. I mean, I have a picture of Tallahassee. Y'all know what Tallahassee looks like. But these trees on the streets of Tallahassee, they line, the, the narrow streets of Tallahassee, they're beautiful. They have, it's just beautiful. A pop cup, have a video, for sake of time, I won't show you. I'm in a parking lot with a Home Depot and a McDonald's, and there's live oak stretched across the parking lot of these places. Hilton Head, if y'all vacation there. You can't even see the, some of the businesses for the trees, but people know that. They, it's like iconic. But we, where are our trees? Where are our trees from, like Ford Place to Busy Bee? They're gone. People, there's no rules in place. People clear cut. Engineers and designers, and they're gonna go off what the developer says. They're, they're gonna design ponds and retention and whatever. I, I will say, in this particular place, the retention's outrageous. I don't think they, they got their percarates wrong. Maybe. I don't know. That's a different discussion.
Ma'am, I don't want to cut you short, but we got a lot to get to.
I'm done. I'm almost done. Y'all know the value of live oaks. They
I'm in the nursery business.
Good. So I'm preaching to the choir. I'm glad. It's important. I have, and there's, the majority of the 67 counties in Florida already have tree ordinances. I had saved some on a thumb drive, just examples of tree ordinances that I, I think we need to put, discuss and put in place, not to limit, but to protect. But I've stood, and I'm in closing, beneath the boughs of the great sequoia trees in the Sierra Nevada in California, under the redwood trees on Pacific Coast. I've hiked bamboo forests in Hawaii. I've climbed the terrifying Angels Landing Trail in Zion National Park. I've rappelled down rock faces in Moab, Utah. I've experienced the vastness of the Grand Canyon and the power of Niagara Falls. I've watched the explosion of Old Faithful and felt the hot springs in Alaska. But I've also visited the Golden Gate Bridge, Statue of Liberty, the Navy Pier in Chicago, the Empire State, St. Louis Arch, and the Alamo. And these man-made places, they don't hold a candle to those natural places that I've visited. They, they are beautiful works of God that would not be there if there weren't intervention. Were, they would be commercialized and destroyed. These places are worth protecting. Our trees, our live oaks specifically, are worth protecting. It was the foresight of people that came before us that developed protections, and we need to do the same. We need to have a vision that protects our county from cutting down these trees. They were here long before we were, and they'll be here if we leave them alone, long after. What, what are we building here? What do we want our community to look like? We are stewards of this earth, and we're called to protect it and create beautiful spaces. We have to be purposeful and intentional with what we are building. We can't sacrifice or minimize the natural beauty for temporary things. I'm asking
Ma'am, I really got to move on.
To cut the live oaks, until, just a halt to cutting them for permitted, things that are already permitted, that are underway, and things that will be, until y'all can put together an ordinance that makes sense. And, and there's, like I said, many counties that have it, but I would like that to happen, because the whole other side of that street, or that driveway, is next.
I assure you, we got the point. So, thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Name and address for the record, please.
Nadine Smith, 22066 45th Drive, Lake City. I'm still Swanee County. I'm in the ranch house. We need to do something about animal control in this county. I have a neighbor that in one year since we've lived on our property, has killed or neglected five animals that have died. I called them, sorry, my allergies are killing me.
I know what you mean.
We called Animal Control the first time, over two dogs that were abandoned. The owner had not been home for over three weeks. And then we were told, "I'm sorry, it's after 5:00 on Friday. You'll have to wait till Monday." We had no animal control, only 9:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. Number one, what is that? So Monday, they called me, and they came out and they took pictures, and they said, "Well, we'll bring you some feed. We can't remove them off this property." Okay. I have chickens. Yes, I've named chickens. But one of their dogs got loose and killed my chicken. And you know what they told me? You have the right to shoot them. I'm sorry. They did call the owner finally, and they came and picked up one of the dogs. We didn't realize the puppy was still in the backyard. So I called them again. You need to come get this puppy. It's gonna die. We're gonna make that owner be accountable for his animals. I went and got the puppy, and before the next morning, the puppy died in my husband's office of malnutrition. We tried, but we were told, "Ah, if you don't take care of them..." And then I see this big article in the newspaper about how live oak doesn't have, is a no-kill shelter. Yeah, because they won't pick up any animals. They let them die on the people's property. I'm sorry, something has to be done. I have three dogs, and my dogs eat before I do. I have two cats and 15, 14 chickens. They eat. They are well taken care of. We need to hold Animal Control responsible and have somebody on call 24/7. What if a kid was being mauled to death? No animal control. Thank you.
Thank you. You was just right on that timer, too, what you had that figured out. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Pulling item number nine. Is there any other items from any other commissioners? Seeing none, we'll be looking at item 2 through 8, and 10 through 11. Are there any discussions, or can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins?
Say.
Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. Item number nine, authorization to apply for a Trailgo grant for up to $200,000 for the Swanee River Greenway at Brantford, granting the Parks and Recreation Director of the Authority to apply for the funds on behalf of the county, and to allow staff to sign and related documents. I asked Mr. Fury to come up and explain this, because I'd had a phone call about it, so, thank you, Mr. Fury.
Sure, no problem. And really, we didn't have any, I didn't put any backup behind this, but, so I apologize for that. But basically, it's a brand-new grant, just came out. There's a $4 million pot. They're awarding $200,000 grants at a, for a project, and it's for trail maintenance, basically. So we can do anything from picnic tables, trash cans, repair potholes, additional lighting, signage, you know, different things like that. We could potentially buy a, a piece of equipment, an ATV or utility car to pull a blower or a sweeper to, you know, clean the trail. So we're gonna write, we, excuse me, we intend to write one for the city of Live Oak and for the county down at the Greenway in Brantford, and then the Heritage Trail in Live Oak, and it's, see where we go. So that's the background of it.
Well, saying that, can the town of Brantford write one as well?
They do not own the trail. It's county.
I understand.
Yes, sir. We tried. We thought we could slide that out.
I'm just trying to look out for my people.
I hear you. Stacy, she's got me over there.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Any, any questions of the public for Mr. Fury? Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. Item number nine, is there any further discussion, or can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. Item number, under Constitutional Officer Items, item number 14, Mr. Baker, set date, time, and location for tentative and final budget hearings. Mr. Barry Baker.
It's alright. Just gonna bring this to your attention. It's the time of the year that we have to set the, it's a tentative budget hearing, times and locations and, and dates. We also have to set that it's a tentative meeting as well. It's a tentative budget hearing must be between the, it's the dates of September 3rd and September 18th, after 5:00 PM. September 3rd would have been ideal, but it's where the, the school board already has theirs, and, and our, as the county follows the school board in rankings, so it's where we couldn't have it that day. Due to the newspaper only running on Wednesdays, and the requirement for the advertising deadlines, it's where we're very limited in when we can hold these meetings. Eric has worked on the scheduling, unless y'all want to have the, the final hearing on Friday night or Saturday, it's where that, we are suggesting, holding the tentative budget hearing on Thursday, September 5th, at 5:05, say here in the judicial annex. We're looking at holding the final budget hearing Monday, September 23rd, at 5:05, here in the judicial annex.
Any comment from the board? We all good with those dates?
September 1st. It'd be September, it's tentative is September 5th at 5:05.
Okay.
And the final budget hearing would be September 23rd at 5:05, here in the judicial annex. Be in the judicial annex for both.
Is everybody good with that schedule, or is there any discrepancies? Mr. Scott, you okay?
Little bit swollen.
You need a, we don't have to vote on that, though. We do.
If you can vote on that, just... If you can vote on that, just, just so that we have it.
Okay. Any further discussion on that, or can I get a motion to approve item number 14?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mobley?
Say.
Second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four. Item number 15.
Okay, the gross taxable value for Swanee County for 2024 is $2,787,286,771. Each meal would generate approximately $2,787,287, approximately. Last year, at the, at the final budget hearing, you as a board set the millage at nine meals. The rollback rate has now been established, and it is 8.528 meals for 2024. The rollback rate has been defined as the rate that would generate the same amount of property revenues as approved for the prior year, less allowances for new construction, additions, deletions, annexations, and improvements. I do want to remind you, though, as a board, that, that you can lower the rate at any time, all the way up to the final budget hearing. However, once you set the rate tonight, you will not be able to adjust it up. So you cannot increase the millage rate. So I just wanted to make sure that you, as a board, understand that.
So we're at nine meals currently, Mr. Baker?
Correct.
And the rollback is what?
The rollback rate is 8.528 meals.
And we can set it at nine and choose to lower it, but you can't raise it once you set it, is that correct?
It is correct.
Board, is there, what's your thoughts?
I said, where it is, do we...
Do we have a budget hearings? We need to vote on that, don't you, Mr. Baker? I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
Do we want to, do I have a motion to approve the proposed not to exceed millage rate for 2024, '25?
It's tentative.
Tentative, I'm sorry. Tentative, at nine meals.
Yeah, I'll make a motion on that one.
A motion by Commissioner Mobley?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
So, Don, can you say something?
No, I'm good.
Any staff items?
Can I speak on that?
Yes, sir.
Moses Klepper, 1458100, Sec. Pat, Live Oak. I, uh, on this budget thing, I'm not gonna surprise any of y'all up here. I see new faces out here, might surprise a few folks out there, but I, uh, I've never sat up there. I've sat on other boards, and I was responsible for, you know, percentage-wise, similar budgets. And I, I don't necessarily expect any of y'all to act as conservative fiscally as I am. I'm probably, I've made this statement once before, and it's probably still true. I'm probably most conservative's vendor in the room, and I'm not ashamed of that. It served me well. I, I'm not satisfied, and I'm upset in a lot of these meetings with different boards. I'm, I'm, I'm not satisfied with y'all going above and beyond. I heard that term used today. Making sure we're getting the best bang for the buck in every aspect. I understand y'all got, this is a big county, big budget, lot of money, and I see some, some serious efforts looking out for the taxpayers. I've seen some other extremes of that, and all y'all done hurt it all, you know? Please, you know, there's poor people in this county. There's more poor people than wealthy people, you know? What mattered, what, you know, that nine millage rate? I told one candidate, I'm not gonna call him out, but when he was running for office, I said, "One of the best opportunities for you to hold that seat," and I was in his corner, "is bring that millage down, bring that tax rate down." All right? I ain't seen that happen. I ain't seen it going in that direction. The tax rate, the millage rate's different. We're one of the poorest counties in the state, yet our, our tax rate's one of the highest. I'd like to see that change and get more towards, you know, balancing that out. Can we do that in one action? No. Can we do it with a mentality and a conscious effort? This, I tell you, this 390-acre purchase, it's got me very concerned. I've heard Mr. Morrison and other commissioners and other discussion that, you know, you know, there's no lose, no lose on it. One thing I've inquired about that I haven't gotten answer back from anyone about is that it, or the people, the company that currently owns that property, are they even by, and I don't have all my notes, but are they even allowed to own and sell that property? Nobody, I don't know if anybody searched that. I, I haven't. I don't have near the access to information you guys do. That should be an easy one for y'all to find out. I'm concerned about that. I truly am. And it ain't just, I don't come up here just to say something to do something. It truly, I got other things I could do, but that's one major concern. And, and I, my first thing when y'all, well, I'm going off track here a little bit, but the, I didn't...
Oh, you're out of time.
No, I didn't. This, this is not a time dump, I guess. But y'all get me. I, I'm serious, my heart, my heart...
I get, I get where you're coming from, Mr. Klepper, I do. And the, the reason for all the economic development stuff and all that is, is to try to lower the millage rate at some point by increasing the amount of businesses that are paying taxes. And by that, we can raise more revenue, doesn't come on the homeowner, and at that point, then you can lower that millage rate. And that's always been my goal since I've been elected, was, that was my whole thing, was we, we need more businesses, we need more jobs, and that way, we could lower that millage rate. So I'm, I'm not against you on that.
I, I believe that with you. The master plan, the five-year, 10-year, 15-year master plan of the whole county, I mean, like what y'all doing out there at the Catalyst Site, I think, and incorporating the city in. I mean, there's so much that, that needs to be done, and I know there's only so much time and all that, but this county's fixing to boom, you know? It is booming, actually. It's happening right now. And, and so I've lived in boom cities that I had to move away from because I thought I'd live out. I just, again, control growth. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a request from Priscilla Anderson. Here she is. Name and address for the record, Ms. Anderson.
Good evening. My name is Priscilla Anderson. I reside, I reside, thank you, I reside at 515821141st Road, McAlpin, 32062. I'm not comfortable speaking in public, so give me a moment.
You're doing fine.
I'm here this evening to establish a public record. I fear for myself and my son.
If you don't mind, would you, just a little closer to that mic, please, ma'am? Thank you.
I'm here this evening to establish a public record. I fear for myself and my son, who is autistic, for our safety and lives. I've been told by the police to sell and move, and also that this is a stand-your-ground My neighbor's been harassing delivery drivers, the road graders, neighbors, and anyone driving on 141st Road for 18 years. She's called deputies over 200 times in the last 10 years. Here's the stack. 10 years, 205 she calls. And here's the latest police report. The grader driver has been in S-77s, which is stalking her for a long time. That's one police call. Next one is County Road Grader. She advises he's stalking her and harassing her and almost ran her over. This is one of the 200, two of the 200. Then we have FEMA came to get the trailer. FEMA has trailer on properties. She's refusing FEMA to come on property and get it. They call FEMA. FEMA stated they should have authority to get the trailer. Police informed him. Leo does not have authority without court order. No contact was made with her by Leo or FEMA. FEMA workers stated the gate was locked and they would be leaving. So that's just some of the, I mean, there's 200 more. So...
Ms. Anderson, I'm, I'm well aware of your issue there.
Yes, everybody is. Yes, they are. Yes.
What is it that you want from us?
Okay. So, at this time, the state attorney has criminal investigation because she has hit two people on April 28th, 2024. I ran away, or I may have been hurt also. So I want this to be public record, that I'm afraid. I fear for my safety and my son's safety. I do. Because this just doesn't seem normal to call those times. And I want that to be public record, which I haven't been able to have before. So we now have that public record, that I fear for my safety and my life and my son's safety and life.
So, is there any more comments, have any ideas? I mean, what can we do about something like this?
Well, you know, we've been over on the phone a lot about this, and I'm sure Mr. Morrison's been involved in this, and the Sheriff's Department, and, you know, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't, I can't tell you what to do.
Okay, so, it's not easy to keep in blocks, and I would like to read the blockages. And when that happens, this is what happens.
Your mic's off again, ma'am. Just push the button down there at the base. There you go.
So when the police come, and she starts striking people and walking in front of the equipment, so they have to stop. So...
I, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, I really don't. You can call the Sheriff's Department, you can get an attorney. I, I don't know that there's any relief that us as county commissioners can do anything about it. You know, it's, that's, that's a civil thing, that's a, you know, a law thing.
It's been in front of Judge Fina, and she was ordered to remove the blockages by the people who owned the property before me, which was never disclosed to me.
But I, I don't know what to, I don't know what to say to you. I mean, I know where this has been, and I know we've talked about it, and...
I know. Everybody knows all about it.
And I've tried, and I, I just don't know what else to do, short of law enforcement or judicial system.
So to move, that's the advice, or?
No, ma'am, it wouldn't be my advice to move, no.
Stand-your-ground state, is that what they want me to do? I don't really wanna do that.
But I don't know that there's, I, I understand you wanna put it on the record, and that's fine. We got that taken care of, but I don't see, if you've called the Sheriff's Department and you've got an attorney, and there's just nothing we can do as a commissioner, or that I'm aware of. Is there more, Mr. Morrison?
No, Mr. Chairman, as, I've sat down with an hour and a half with Ms. Anderson going over kinda her situation. I certainly empathize with her, and I know she's spoken with, I think, everybody on this board. Unfortunately, you know, we do have a conservative audience, and I think they'd understand the idea that it's real limited as to what the state can do to control the behavior of one person. And so if that person's acting up, you have to avail yourself of available civil and criminal remedies. A board simply can't do anything about the behavior of a single individual, no matter how bad that one individual may or may not be acting. So as to the quality of those remedies, I certainly understand your frustration with that 100%, but that doesn't change the fact that this county board doesn't have the power to go in and regulate the behavior of one individual.
Okay. If somebody does get hurt, then we do have that on public record now, and everybody here heard this, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any staff items? Mr. Jason.
Done it earlier. Just a couple things. Wanted to let you guys be aware, if you can mark on your calendar, August 14th, you probably already have that date for Duke Energy ribbon cutting. And while they're in town, we wanted to do something at the Greenway as well, while those officials are here, since they were so instrumental in getting us that trestle crossing there at the Chautauq. So August 14th at 11:00, after that first one, we'll, we'll go right around the corner and, at the bridge there, and do a brief ribbon cutting with Duke. And we'll send out an invitation here between now and then, but wanted to mention tonight. Real quick, just Royal Springs, we hope to get that open. Gene and the crew paved the roadway in today, and they have the millions down in the parking lot, so hopefully by the weekend, we'll open that back up to the public. Not that that stopped anybody from going in there the last two weeks, but, anyway. Just appreciate Gene and his guys. That was a big project that turned into, there's always, you know, more complexities than you realize, and they did a great job. Mark's guys are out there as well, fixing some decking to get into the spring, so appreciate them. Just kinda go on record for the public. We'll be sending out some messaging, but, you know, we'll, probably around the 1st of August, we will start charging, you know, to gain access to that, and it'll be credit card only. So that'll be a, you know, just an educational campaign to get the word out that it'll be card-only with a machine out there for entrance. And then we'll transition that, excuse me, to Little River Springs as well, and try to get that word out so people know, because Little River is cash-only at the moment. Anyway, message is that Royal Springs will be open here shortly. I know Mr. Lance is not here, but he'll, he'll be happy to hear that. We just finished up a Bay Bridge tournament, so appreciate the school. We use the middle school, the high school, and our field for a state tournament over there. Had like 17 teams, and so that was, that was great for the, the businesses in town here. We have three FERDAP grants that, we're starting to get grant agreements. So one of them, Mr. Mobley's district at Welburn Park, $200,000. $200,000 down at Hatch Park in Brantford, and then $200,000 at Heritage Park in the city. So those will be coming, and we'll be working on those here pretty soon. And we just got bids open today for the demolition at the fairgrounds for the Conflitworth Building and those barns, and had a couple good numbers. Had six respondents out of, had 15 at the pre-bid meeting, but only six responded with bids. And two of those were pretty good numbers. The other, other four were fairly high, but we'll, we'll go through those and make sure those two are, you know, qualified, and then we'll go with the low bidder on that, so...
Well, that's great. You had that many responses.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I was pleased. I was worried we wouldn't have any. Gene and LT and Charlie would be doing it.
They probably went out and found you, so...
We anticipate doing that in August, so we'll keep you abreast, but just a quick update.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any questions before you go?
Did you wanna ask about transferring?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Appreciate that. Just real quick, if maybe we could have a quick board action. We, Parks and Rec had, has been letting the school board use an old top dresser that we have. We've had a new one for several years now, and it needs some, some repair work done, and they don't feel like they own it yet. They need some kind of official action that they own it before they can spend money to make a repair to the belt in the top dresser. I didn't know if that's something that you guys, we could donate that to the school board through board action tonight, or, you know, whatever Mr. Morrison thinks, but...
Yeah, no, that's fine.
And I'll write him a letter and convey that to him.
You want a motion and a vote on that?
Yes, sir.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Perkins?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, same sign. And that's to transfer the top dresser from the county to the school board.
Yep. And they, good working relationship with them, so.
Yep. All righty. Thank you, sir. Any other staff items? Any commissioner items? County attorney.
I've spoken enough tonight, Mr. Chairman. I'll defer to next meeting.
Any consultants? Seeing none, we, I think there's an additional agenda item.
Our first one in over a year and a half.
Hey, I haven't seen one of these in a while. We have an additional agenda item for approval of a change order number four in the amount of $27,043.09 with Kirk's Construction Incorporated due to a repair of a washout on the Swanee River Greenway at Brantford Sun Trail Project. Budget impact paid with FDOT funds. And I seen that. That was pretty massive. Is there any discussion? Mr. Scott, you have anything to add to that?
Pretty self-explanatory.
Yes, sir.
Well, what...
Well, what caused that?
Rain.
Rain, washout there?
It was a steep where the trail sits. It was a sharp drop-off there to begin with, so now they've filled it all in, and it's got a taper to it now, so. Better, better deal.
I think it was a motion. That's a move.
You made a motion, Mr. Perkins? I have a motion by Mr. Perkins to approve, a second by Commissioner Mobley, all in favor, aye. Aye. Pass it. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Mr. Administrator?
Just a few things. Wanted to let you know that we worked with Cherry Becker to get a list. That's the company that's going to come and analyze our, our budgets. And looking at if there's any money hanging out, out there we haven't got a hold of yet. Also to look at what we're doing as indirect costs for matches. Sent an email out to the constable officers today and with the backup information from Cherry Becker of what to expect. We'll be setting a meeting with staffers and then with the constable officers so they'll understand what it's all about. But again, it's just so we can go retrieve any money we can from federal or state resources that we were due, that we've not received. Also, probably more importantly, is to look at our match. We have match requirements, making sure we're getting all the bang for the buck on the indirect cost. So just want you to know that that went out to the constable officers. I was going forward to y'all, and I sent it before I did that. I hope I sent it. It was one of those days today. We met last week. I know there's always been some concern about the COVID building and where we are. We've been working with North Florida Professional Services and their architect partners to get that design done. We met with them again on last Thursday and went through all the sheets on the, on the plans, made a few tweaks. We had the full team there from our staff, you know, you know, we had everybody there that'd be touching the, the building and using the building and has some good comments. The wealth of knowledge our folks have is impressive, and we're asking the right questions from architects and engineers. I was pleased with that. But after we got done, we talked about deadlines, and I said, let me be clear. I'm tired of being barked at and bid at for not getting this project moving, and so we have a timeline. By the end of the September, we should have all the plans back, us review, and back to the architects and engineers for getting ready. We'll send those to the Department of Commerce for their approval and then be ready to bid. So being moved forward that this fall is our game plan. One thing I need to action on tonight is, we have an invoice. We're retrieving the information that we lost from the building department. The company is Fields Data Recovery that we're working with to try to retrieve that, that information we lost from the old permits. But we need more approval to ask the clerk's office to expedite that check getting out, so we can get that, that done. So just need board action to, to get that checked. Again, the company name is Fields Data Recovery.
And how much was it?
$27,000.
Wow. Board, you heard the administrator. What say you?
Um, Mr. Scott, how, how that, how, why did we lose it? What, what happened?
The storm that came through on that Friday wiped out the server and the backup. And I'm not a computer guy, but when you restore, you've got layers in your, and you're collecting information, and they have to go through and kind of take, take the pieces apart and put them back together. Hate to say it that way because, you know, that's all I know. But basically, they, they, they take the data that was lost and reconfigure it so we can restore what was, was gone.
So now this, this is a damage during the storm?
Right.
So that, we can't do an insurance claim on it?
We're, we're going to check on that and see if we can.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Mobley?
Yeah, was, is that a 100% recovery, or is that going to be another check after that?
No, it should be 100%.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hale?
And I'm assuming the work's already completed and done because we're back up and operational.
Well, no, we still haven't got all our, we're still limping. This is a lot, a lot of the old information that we cannot retrieve.
But as Commissioner Mobley said, this is the check-in hole to make us whole.
Right.
And they're not going to get it 100%?
Yes.
That would be 100%.
Should be 100%. We're not 100% yet.
No, I say, are they going to retrieve 100%?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. I just need a, need a motion. Commissioner, a motion by Commissioner Mobley to approve the $27,000. For what company was it, Mr. Scott?
Fields Data Recovery.
Fields Data Recovery.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Anything else, Mr. Scott?
Last meeting, you approved the purchase of a yard dog for the, for the transfer station at landfill. Just want to let you know that after we got the approval, Dennis went to work and worked a little bit harder and got another $6,000 lower cost than what we all approved, so.
Well, good for him.
So guys work hard trying to make it happen for the citizens, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Brendan's been working real hard in the past several weeks, especially on budget, obviously, but also on a five-year plan for equipment, trying to pull information and looking at what we've spent in the past, what we need in the future. But I just want to commend her for her efforts and us having a plan going forward for equipment. We want to do that more often in different types of endeavors that actually have a plan. I know that, I mean, Mr. Klepper and others would like to see a plan, and I think it's important that the board has a plan to follow, so. But we'll be bringing some equipment that we have in a lot of them still for this year. Dump trucks and excavators that we have approved of the budget later in the fiscal year, and then get a running start on next year. So just real pleased with her efforts. Lastly, just wanted to introduce Dan Miller. Dan, if you want to come up and... Dan is our official new fire chief. He started yesterday. I've been very pleased and proud of our staff at Fire Rescue, reaching out to help Dan learn and grow. And he's got a lot of questions, obviously, but real proud of what he, what I think he can do and also what our staff's been doing already. They work really hard. You have in front of you some budget sheets just on the, on the assessments. Just so in the future, when you get, get that part, and we just, staffer that worked hard on it today, but howling is Brendan Mandy and also Chief and his staff, trying to, and also Nina, trying to look at the real cost on, on where we are. And just, I knew that, I want to get it to you tonight. I know you moved forward on where we were with the agenda item, but you can always come back a little later and tweak that up if you, if you choose to. But just, you needed to have that information, excuse me, got it out to you. But Chief comes with high marks. He is probably has one of his highest credentials is designated as a fire chief officer. This is not an easy task. You have to sit in front of a panel with other chiefs and get questioned and drilled and get re-certified as you go. So I probably say that wrong, but Dan, if you'd like to say a few words, welcome.
Dan, welcome.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. You know, it's only day two, but I hit the ground running. You know, my staff's been getting me caught up to speed pretty quick. We did a lot of budget stuff today. I've been out in the field already, hitting all the stations, meeting the, meeting the crews face to face, so. Looking forward to doing good things. I'm going to reach out to you guys probably within the next month. I'd like to sit down with each one of you and go over some things, so. Do you have any questions for me?
What, what do you think so far?
I absolutely love everything I've seen so far. I love, I love the citizens. I love everybody I've met up here in Swanee County from where I'm from, you know, the central Florida area. It's just so, so wholesome and so refreshing to be in this type of environment, you know? You know, there, everybody has the same problems, you know, the different issues and all that, but people seem to be more willing to work with each other, so I, I look forward to that. I can't, can't wait.
Well, we're glad to have you and look forward to working with you.
Yes, sir.
Any other board, any, any questions? Man, you're getting off easy.
It's only day two.
Yeah, we'll let you slide for a little while.
All right.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Perkins.
Can I jump back a minute, one, back to the server that was destroyed?
Sure, sure.
Is there anything put into place that we put like a server protector or something that protects from happening again, so we won't have a problem with losing permits and things like that? So these ladies are going to come here and, I see Harold coming there with wise, so you know, reinforcements?
Yes, sir. We, we have reevaluated our former way of doing business and working to do it better. Make sure that the servers, you got a server and a backup in two different locations. Making sure that we don't have it all in one spot. But, yes, sir.
Thank you.
I think it was clear that we're going to do some things better and different.
Yeah.
Need to leave it at that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I can sympathize with them. I go through that process of getting permissions away, and I know I can be troublesome, so. Thank you for doing that.
And let me just say, you know, apologies for any, any inconvenience we've had. It's been a roller coaster ride. Not a good enough excuse, but apologize, take full responsibility, so. We want to work with the folks, make sure we do it right.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
Anything else? Scott, you, that was it?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members' inquiries. Mr. Perkins, you already had yours, so.
Let me, let me the chairman one again.
This is so y'all won't put me back in here.
Doing a good job.
You are.
Mr. Perkins, go ahead.
Yeah, just had a, just a couple things. Had a great time down at the NACO conference down in Tampa. You know, it was on the weekend, and I did that, but anyway. Had a great time visiting a lot of the sessions, breakout sessions, had some on the Robert Rule Order, various other things. But one in particular I liked was the mobile one, was able to go out and visit their trash burning, from trash burning to convert to power, energy. And that, it was awesome where that, all that trash come in, and they burn it, and they separate it. The metals and the non-metals and all the other burns, burns that run the turbines to create power for their waste treatment plant. And plus the power, I think it's like 2,300 homes would be empowered off of that burning of trash. It's not an incinerator, but it's a, some, some, somebody that take all the, the smoke and stuff out so it's not into the air. And very interesting to see how that operation worked down there, to be able to take that trash and bring it in Tampa, they're doing that. So it was very educational, very informative. A lot of people did go and had a lot of questions. So it was very good. It's one of the things, so we got Mark in the house and put him on the spot. That DC, did you get the fans in? Yes, sir. Come on, come on right here. Yeah.
Yeah, he wants you on the record.
Public record.
That's right.
Yes, sir. Well, we already, we've already beat Mr. Scott. We're beating him up already.
I'm sorry, Mr. Perkins?
We've already beaten Mr. Scott up already, so now we're going to go right down to the bone right here.
They, they teach us well. We can take it. All right. Right now, we're still in the grant phase of that. A lot of the preliminary items are already put into place for the engineers. Is that not right? Shannon?
We're in the process of finalizing the grant paperwork, setting the scope of work and the budget for that grant, so we can be processed, and then we can actually sign it and go to bid and start work on it.
Does that answer your question?
How about the fans? Do you get those fans up?
Oh, they're running.
They're running?
They're running. They've been running for a week. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
You like how I passed that off? Was that good?
Yeah, I love it.
You, you was, you was trained well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mark.
No, no, it's good. No, it's, you're good. Thank you. I'm, I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
You're good? That's it? Commissioner Mobley?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Thank you for the staff, and then I'd like to personally apologize, Ms. Sa, Ms. Foster, about your experience at the building department. And I feel like, too, I want to, with Commissioner White, I feel like our staff should be held accountable for their actions, and you know, these people are paid to work the counter, and they're, they're the face of our community when people move here, so we will address your concerns. I just want to let y'all know. Appreciate y'all for coming.
Thank you. Mr. Hale?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I would like to say thank you to several of the folks that work here at the county. We had a little debacle over the holiday at the airport, but Mr. John, Mr. Mark, several other, Mr. Scott, everybody jumped in, and we was able to get that taken care of, so I appreciate the teamwork there. Obviously, Gene and, and Mike and LT, those folks continue to work hard out there. Thank you to Mr. Barry Baker. He's been working with me, someone in my area needing some assistance with their home, and just a lot of good folks jumped in to help that as well, help with that as well. And I want to mention, please, everyone, keep Mr. Randall and Carol Jenkins in your prayers, their family. They're going through a hard time right now, and just want to lift them up and pray for that family, please. So that's all I got. Other than that, good to see everybody.
Thank you.
Yep.
Man, is there not divine intervention? I just, I, I, I'm grateful that our, our President Trump is well alive and doing well, and, and, yes. Just a, but if you don't think that isn't divine intervention, I don't know what to tell you, but that's what it looks like to me. But anyhow, just keep Janet Roberts in your prayers. She's, she's still in, in a bad way. If they're having any fundraisers or anything, and if you can, try to help them out. That'd be appreciated. Other than that, that's all I got. I appreciate all of you coming. I do appreciate all the staff. And to Liz and, and Tria, I assure you, we're looking into it. It's not going under the rug. I promise you. With that, that's all I got. I just need a motion to dismiss. Motion by Commissioner Perkins, second by Commissioner Mobley, all in favor, aye. Board, you're in. Thank you.
Safe travel home.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good job, Barry.